We're gonna go ahead and get started. Everybody will please take your seat. Go ahead and get started. Thank you for being here tonight to tonight's regularly scheduled council meeting. First order of business will be the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Jason Garcia with Celebration Church. If you'll all please rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, we want to thank you for everything you've done in Fairhope so far. We want to pray over this meeting that we do our best to steward what you've given us. Give us wisdom and insight tonight. Help us make Fairhope the best that it can possibly be. We want to thank you in advance for the things you've done, that you're doing, and that you will do in the future. Thank you for such a great city. In your name I pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. There's a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend Garcia. We need a little pocket version of that to carry around with us, don't we? Kevin? A little pocket version of that prayer to carry around with us?
Seriously.
All right. First order of business, councilors, I would like to ask you to amend tonight's agenda to add the items that we discussed in the work session. Actually, one of those was discussed as the information was given to you by Mr. Peterson and mentioned. These will be items 23, 24, and 25. Item 23 would be for to insert the valves to the water main relocation project at Polcat Creek on County Road 9. The work would be $12,000. The second resolution to be added would be to purchase the FuelMaster system that Mr. Kreis presented to us in tonight's work session. And then the third resolution would be to add the addition of the bulkhead and the fuel tank slab with a cost of $16,924. Entertain a motion to approve amending the agenda to add those items.
Some move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Agenda is amended. Thank you. Next item is to approve the minutes of the city council meeting, the work session and agenda meetings which are held on March the 15th. Do you have any changes to those minutes? Any additions, deletions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, we had another successful year for Arts and Crafts Festival with the weather cooperating mostly. I'm told the vendors said they made more money on Friday in the rain than they did on Saturday, so I guess everyone took shelter in the vendors, in the vendor booths. I want to thank all of our city employees, in particular Public Works Department and our Police Department, for everything you do every year to make this special. And also all the volunteers, because this is something that we really could not achieve without the just, I don't know how many it is, but it's a lot of volunteers. The annual FIF tournament was held last Thursday and was a resounding success. There were 35 teams who signed up for the two shotgun starts. Again, the weather was on our side and everyone had a great time. I have been advised by the, that the committee was very happy with the way the event was managed by our staff and how smoothly everything went, and over $50,000 was raised. Congratulations to all the participants in this year's Baldwin County Special Olympics. And a special thank you to Tom Cool, our Parks and Rec Director. This is one of our biggest events every year at the football stadium, and this venue was just absolutely beautiful and in great shape thanks to Tom and his crew. Let me look at this, the, not sure what picture we're on, but I wanted to point out and thank the gentlemen who served 500, this year they served 545 meals to athletes, volunteers, and teachers behind the scenes. You can't even see them from the field, but they're back there cooking all day for all of these volunteers. The average age, 73, and I appreciate their, their work every year. On Sunday, we had our, the golf course was busy again with employees tournament. The field was full and it was successful day for everyone. I am pleased to announce that Jillian Saffel has joined our city staff as purchasing manager. Welcome to Jillian. I know we are all looking forward to working with you and getting our purchasing department back up to speed and our process streamlined. Thank you. I want to say congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year in Baldwin County, who were honored Friday at the Grand Hotel, especially our Fairhope teachers. Casey Hardman at Fairhope Elementary, Brittany Lucky, Fairhope Intermediate, Janice Kenyard, Fairhope Middle, Kristy Davis at Fairhope High, and Sarah Salty at J. Larry Newton. And a special praise for Janice Kenyard, who also received the County Teacher of the Year. We so appreciate the work you all do every day for us and our kids. As most of you may have read, a cyclist was hit and killed yesterday on County Road 13 in Fairhope, and the person was charged with manslaughter and is leaving, for leaving the scene. I am holding a special meeting with the Bike Ped Committee and asking the Trailblazers to also come to, to help renew our "I'm your neighbor, I ride a bike" campaign and come up with ways to better promote Share the Road. Some may be familiar with the Good Life Ride, a group of us started nine years ago, and it's held annually around Mother's Day. Coastal Alabama Foundation has taken it over, and it's still held every year. I wanted to give the date, but I don't have it in front of me, but it's always around Mother's Day, and it's, it's there to promote bike safety awareness. And so I encourage people to write in this and then look for ways that the city's gonna try to get on board and really just talk about pedestrian safety and the fact that Fairhope was actually the first city in the whole state to adopt the Complete Streets program. And so we're very proud of that, and we're gonna continue doing what we can to make it safer. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item on tonight's agenda will be public participation pertaining to agenda items. Once again, only agenda items for this phase of public participation. If you have anything to discuss with the council, I want to give your thoughts on items five through, and that would be 25 now with the three added resolutions. If you'd please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone? Okay. Seeing no one for public participation, remember if you have something that's not on the agenda and you'd like to approach the council, you'll be given that opportunity at the end of tonight's meeting. With that, we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Conyers.
Yes, I actually have just a couple of things to bring up. Number one, I know a lot of folks are traveling for spring break. Just wish them safe travels and safe return home. I'm sure Councilman Robinson, Councilman Brown, or wherever they are tuning in and watching tonight. If not, then I'm sure we won't hear anything from, and safe travels to my family too when they come back. But I wanted to bring up the mayor's salary, the mayor's position. I think there's something I'd like to, not necessarily discuss tonight, but I'd like to see us put it on the work session in the next couple of meetings. We've got, we've been in office about a year and a half. Another couple of years, we'll have another election. I just think we need to address some of the mayor's, I guess, salary, full-time versus part-time. Do we want a city administrator? Do we want to consider going city manager route? What are our expectations for that position? And I think it'd be best if we had all that ironed out well in advance of, of people running for office, so there's not a political issue. And I think that there's a lot of, a lot of things to discuss and consider on, on all those different issues. So, you know, maybe everyone take, take a month or so to just think about it, think about what they see, that becoming, what does Fairhope want in, in that position, and what is expected? I mean, right now, I think certainly a full-time mayor is expected. I don't think that your current salary is equivalent to, you know, what a full-time mayor ought to be making, but there was opportunity to, to run the utilities as well. So we got a lot of things I think we need to discuss and, and iron out, and I think it'd be best to do that well ahead of the next election cycle. So, just something I'd like to throw out there. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what the mayor said on the Special Olympics. This is my fourth year going out there, and I tell you, it's a blessing every year. It's gotten better and better. We had a beautiful, beautiful day this year, and I guess on a selfish note, it's what these kids do for me. They really inspire me, and the heart that these children have is just unbelievable. If anybody, next year when it comes around, I highly suggest y'all go out there and take a look and watch these kids perform and do their athletics that they do. It is really, it is really very, very special. The other thing I would like to say is that the, I'd like to mention one of our own, our member of personnel board, Sherri Douglas, was also voted Teacher of the Year in ROTC for the Foley High School, and she's a member of our personnel board, so we have very qualified people. And on a personal note, my daughter Brittany Lucky was also voted Teacher of the Year for Special Services at Fairhope Intermediate School. So, I thought that was really good, and these, these people put a real, real, they do a lot of work, you know, my daughter notwithstanding, they do a lot of work with these children and really give a good educational value for these kids. And the other thing, and my wife's gonna get mad at me for putting this last, I'd like to announce the birth of the newest addition to the Boone clan. I had a grandson last Wednesday on the 21st, seven-pound, four-ounce whopper, gonna take after his granddaddy. We're proud to have Michael Scott Boone join to the family.
I have a few items tonight, but first up, I'd like to yield the floor to Mr. Orman Thompson, the president of Thomas Hospital. I also see Kathy Baugh in the audience, the director of Thomas Hospital Foundation. Kathy, are you gonna join him?
No. I don't know if I can get her to speak or not, but I'll speak for her.
She's welcome to come and say a few words, but I do want to recognize Kathy, though.
This is her 25th anniversary as a director of the Thomas Hospital Foundation, and it's only been in existence 25 years. So, she said it the whole time, there's a lot of things that we have at Thomas Hospital we wouldn't have without the foundation and that group that, that works so hard to raise money for them. So I appreciate Kathy. Thank you all for having me tonight, Council Mayor. Appreciate you allowing us to speak tonight. I'm representing a very fine group at Thomas Hospital, very talented physicians, caring staff, great volunteers there. But I want to thank you all for your investment in Thomas Hospital. We came to you all probably over three years ago, before you had a baby on the way and the family, Mr. Boone, but asked you for some, an investment in Thomas Hospital for the birth center, and you were kind enough to do that and agree to do that. We appreciate that, and we finished the birth center, and it's beautiful. We invite you to come look at it anytime, but it really will deliver the next generation of residents here in our county. We deliver 1,200 babies a year at Thomas Hospital. It's a very busy place, and we needed that birth center. I want to thank you all for your investment there at Thomas Hospital. A few other things, too, just to let you know, there's a lot of growth going on with our health system and for our hospital. We've recently opened the Colony Rehabilitation Hospital at Thomas. It's a 12-bed inpatient acute rehab unit. There's not one like it in Baldwin County. We're already at 10 patients. We opened last week, we're already at 10 patients of the 12, so there's definitely a need for that. We opened the Breast Center last year, which is a state-of-the-art breast center. Our new radiation oncology facility's there on campus at Thomas Hospital, the latest in technology there, and we were recently accredited as a cancer center at Thomas Hospital as well, so we're very proud of that also. Great physicians there, great staff, great volunteers, great community support. We appreciate that very much, and we're very proud to be able to care for the patients in our area, and are humble to do that. I will remind you of our economic impact as well. We have a payroll of $100,000 a day at Thomas Hospital. We have a utility bill of $270,000 a month that we pay here in our community, and we have about a $300 million impact annually through Thomas Hospital. So it is a great facility. It's, it is a quality of life indicator for an area when you have strong healthcare and strong schools, and we do have strong healthcare, and we've got very good schools, and we appreciate you all's support, and thank you for what you do as well. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any questions.
Any questions, Council, Mayor?
Thank you all very much. Appreciate y'all. Thank what y'all do. Thank you.
We appreciate what you mean to the community, Mr. Thompson, himself a Fairhope High School graduate.
That's right. Barely got through there, but I did.
The next thing I'd like to bring up, council, and I wish that there were five of us here tonight, is that several years ago, the city purchased the Triangle property, roughly 108 acres there. We spent $8.75 million. We had several months ago, a generous group of people make a donation to the city to pay for the cost of putting that in a conservation easement, and I think that it's time to start moving the ball on that conservation easement, and I would hope that, and I've talked to Councilman Conyers quite a bit about this, and so I know where he stands, but I would, I would like to invite the entire council and the mayor's staff and mayor to get on board with going ahead and pushing forward with a conservation easement for that area. You know, green space is, is, is a hot commodity right now. We're, you know, the fastest-growing city in the state of Alabama. People are gonna be, you know, if not today, they're gonna be longing for green space, and I think that we need to preserve that area. Maybe I would envision walking trails, you know, potentially some benches along there, and I would envision some markers out there, maybe pointing out the various species of trees and cleaning that up, but I would envision keeping it, you know, fairly wild and fairly green and not having any concrete or asphalt poured out there. I think that it's something that the people expect. When we purchased that property, that was their expectation for what the city should do, and I'd really like to be good stewards of that land and, and push it, push forward with this conservation easement, and I'd like council support on, on this, if I can get it. So, y'all have any comments on that?
Actually, I do. I talked with several people about this, and the fact that that's the entranceway in the Fairhope, it needs to be kept, as you say, in a, in a green space environment with just a park area, and there's no parks in the north end of town, so I think it's a terrific idea.
Well, it also protects the integrity of Fly Creek, which has been, you know, a hot button over the last, you know, many years. I think that it, I think it's a win-win situation. If we look back in 50 years and, and we had not preserved this land, I don't think history's gonna treat us too kindly, and I think that we need to, to, to get after it. So, the sooner the better. I want to apologize to the employees that were at the golf outing on Sunday. I did play in the mayor's tournament on Thursday, which was my one day now to play golf every several months, apparently. I got to join Councilman Conyers on the last couple of holes. We kinda got jammed up on there, so thank y'all for participating if you did, and Mayor, I saw you out there, didn't get a chance to speak to you. I was running late just to get there and get in the car in time to start, but saw several employees out there, and I hope that you had a good time, but I'm sorry I missed the employee outing on, on Sunday. Our kids are out of school now for the spring break, and I had to spend a little bit of family time with them. With that, I'll close council comments, and we'll move on to item five, which is a resolution to accept the public streets, public right-ofways, and all of Fairhope's public utilities located in the public right-ofways within Old Battles Village Phase 3 for maintenance subject to the bond posted, and authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreements between the City of Fairhope and Truland Homes LLC. And Mr. Dias, I think you stepped out when I was assigning who was gonna speak to these things. Is there any, anything, I know this is just standard operating procedure, is there anything that we need to know about this in particular?
No, sir. I believe these are all run-of-the-mill, and they're all good, ready to, ready to be approved.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and ask you that. Are they all six, seven, and eight similar in fashion?
Yes, sir. They are.
No need to raise a flag on any of that? Entertain a motion to accept the public streets, right-ofways, and all of Fairhope's public utilities located in the public right-ofays within Old Battles Village Phase 3.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item number six is a resolution accepting all of Fairhope's public utilities located in the right-ofays within Battles Trace at the Colony Phase 4 for maintenance and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and the teachers' retirement system of Alabama. You have any questions for Mr. Dias, council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and accepted, a motion and a second to accept all of the public utilities located in the right-ofays within Battles Trace at the Colony Phase 4 for maintenance. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item seven is a resolution accepting all of Fairhope's public utilities located in the right-ofays within the Pine Wood subdivision for maintenance and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and Sweetwater Investments LLC. Any questions for Mr. Dias, council? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept these.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item number eight is a resolution accepting the public streets, public right-ofways, and all of Fairhope's public utilities located in the public right-ofays within Phase 3 of Silver Leaf at Firethorn for maintenance subject to the bond posted and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreements between the City of Fairhope and Firethorn Developments LLC. Any questions for Mr. Dias?
I just have one, I guess, clarification issue I've got. On one agenda, it says Silver Leaf; on another, it says Greenbrier. I don't know if it matters.
Yeah, the, the actual resolution says Greenbrier. Which is correct?
It's my understanding, I believe it's Greenbrier. I don't have that, the file in front of me.
It'd be Phase 3 of Greenbrier at Firethorn, and that's how it's written in your book. Can I get you to just withdraw the motion?
Sure. Withdraw the motion.
As Silver Leaf.
As Silver Leaf.
Yes. So, I'll entertain a motion to accept those streets, right-ofways, and utilities located within Phase 3 of Greenbrier at Firethorn.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Good catch there, Councilman Conyers. Item number nine is a resolution that the city council authorizes Mayor Wilson to submit a letter to the AMEA requesting the three grants totaling $20,000 to be used for operating an entrepreneurial development center in partnership with the Baldwin County Community and Economic Foundation, the 501(c)(3) arm of the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance, and the University of Alabama, and is based provided by and in conjunction with BBVA Compass Bank. Council, this is for the Small Business Incubator, known as Hatch. You're, I believe, all familiar with that. I know that we did have one staff member that had requested this money to be used for wayfinding signage, and I certainly think that we all support that wayfinding signage downtown, but I think that the, that the grant monies, we know it fits this perfectly so we can find other budgeted money to use for the wayfinding. I think we should use these grants for this purpose, and I would like to entertain a motion to approve that.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, requesting the grants. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, authorized to submit the letter. Thank you, council. Item 10 is a resolution the city council approves the proposed Title VI program for the City of Fairhope and the James P. Nick Center in order to comply with the Title VI federal requirements. Ms. Hanks, can you address that, please?
Yes, the Nick Center gets a bus or a van that they use to shuttle around the citizens, and this is a title program and a policy that has to be in place, and it's updated every three years.
Okay, so this would put the policy in place for the next three years.
Correct.
All right. And see Appendix 8, and then the Title VI program, revised March 26, 2018. Council, I will entertain a motion to approve the Title VI program.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item 11 is a resolution the City of Fairhope approves the selection of O'Donnell &amp; Associates Incorporated to perform professional consulting services for groundwater-level monitoring at three city wellfields for the Water Department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to establish or not to exceed a limit of $6,000 and to execute the associated contract. Mr. Peterson, is this to make, just make sure the, quote, "The wells aren't running dry, the aquifer's not going dry," and maybe determine whether or not we need to know?
One thing I do want to do, though, is take this opportunity while we're doing this assessment to look at whether there are places just upstream within the aquifer that we can put some monitor wells, and maybe use those to test for early precursors of, you know, contaminants that may be coming toward the well, and give us a, you know, a little bit of advanced warning of that. Whether that requires us to reduce the volume that we produce from that wellfield or not, I don't know yet, but the other part of this thing is when, when they determine what the aquifer and that wellfield, the ultimate capacity may be, that when we start looking at how to add to the transmission system of the water, you know, system adjacent to that property, we'll be able to put in the appropriate-sized water main so that we're not overpressuring any part of the system as we try to pump into it. It's, it's, it's a good opportunity to know where you stand.
As far as the, you know, looking for, you know, a precursor to contamination, do we have any reason to believe we've ever had that? I've always thought our water reports, water quality reports were always quite.
The water quality's excellent. We meet all the EPA guidelines, but when you start to produce more volumes of water out of a field, there are certain contaminants, radionuclide-type stuff in particular, that can scour from deposits that are in the aquifer, and typically you can see those ahead of time if you're upstream of the wellfield, but, well, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting we're gonna find a lot of contaminants. I'm just saying that if we catch them before they get to the well, we may be able to adjust what our scheme is to prevent that from being a problem.
So is that included in this $6,000?
No, it's just something I want to work with our geologist to do while we're doing this study.
Okay. Okay. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Peterson? Any at all? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the selection of O'Donnell &amp; Associates.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Item 12 is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Vulcan Incorporated to perform design engineering services for sidewalks between US 98 and County Road 13. This is the AL.TAP grant number TAPA-A-TA17 for the Public Works Department with a not-to-exceed amount of $39,000. Who can speak to that?
Johnson.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, would you speak to that, please?
As you recall, a couple of meetings back, we had to correct some resolution that had a cut-and-paste error, and this is kind of the next stage of that. We did sit down with Vulcan and negotiate this project. This is actually two segments of sidewalks, one on Twin Beach, and one on, and my mind just went blank. Andy?
No.
And Manley Road. Thank you. And this is for the survey and design and letting services for that contract. Once we get open bids, then the TAP grant is in play for 75%, 25% match on us.
And I will say that I think that we've been talking about this, especially there on County Road 44, I believe, for, for quite some time, and I actually believe, oh, two or three years ago, council gave direction to kind of redirect some of those sidewalks at two areas that were probably in more need than, than they were on County Road 13, and you're shaking your head. You remember that, clerk?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So very good. Excited about that.
Thank you.
Council? You're welcome. Council, I'll entertain a, a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, allowing the mayor to execute the contract? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item 13 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase 10 Motorola portable radios, the APX 6000, 700 to 800 megahertz for the IT department. The type of equipment needed is on the Alabama State Department. Purchasing bid list therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total cost of $24,935.50. And Mr. Montgomery, I see you just came in, so you could come up here and please explain what the purpose of these are?
Sure. I believe it was John Saraceno that asked me to put this in the budget, but these radios will be used for emergency purposes. We're assuming that all communications is failed. This is kind of like a way to communicate when cell phone service is down. These are the same radios as the police uses. We'll have a separate channel for Keys City personnel to communicate on during an emergency situation. That utilizes our tower here and Fairhope and the other towers throughout Baldwin County.
Okay. So, counsel, just to kind of reiterate, and this is your second look at this. This was approved in your budget. It was a budget item.
That's right. It came under, I think, a budget $25,000.
They've learned everything over $1,000 and make us feel good.
[laughing]
Okay, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to purchase these portable radios.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Thank you, council. Item 14 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase security equipment for the rec department at the Fairhope Recreation Center and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be $34,563.51. And Mr. Montgomery, if you and Mr. Cool want to describe that.
I'll address this issue. We have a budget on this one. I've budgeted $15,000 for this item. What I plan to do is phase it in, do one phase this year, one phase next year. However, we had an incident a couple months ago at the rec center with a custodian, and we went to pull the video and discovered the whole system is completely offline and not working, so we're in need of replacing the entire system now. So I'm not able to do it in phases as I hope to.
What, when you say it's down, I mean...
It will not record. None of the cameras will show up through the monitor.
So is, what is this new, what is this $34,000 something odd?
We're replacing every camera. The cameras there, I have an email from Julie, my investigator Julie Joyner, saying those cameras that were there are so old, and they're pretty much useless. You can't tell one person from the next. So what we're going to do is replace every camera in the rec center, add a couple in the court area that we have, two basketball courts in the rec center, so we're going to be adding some cameras there for some added security. These are high-definition cameras, so we'll be able to zoom in on faces and recognize folks when an incident occurs.
Okay.
So this is, I mean, it's pricey, but the cameras are worth it, and this does include the installation and running of new cabling. And plus, it ties into our existing system where it's monitored in two locations in the police department, one at dispatch and another area.
And Jeff, I don't dispute any of that. You make a good case. Counsel, I had a discussion about these types of things, and this is probably a good example to use for budgeting purposes. I had a discussion with our treasurer, Mr. Henson, and also with Ms. Kavanaugh. She happened to walk in while he and I were discussing this a week or two ago, and I think that probably everybody in this council will support this and vote on this here momentarily. But when we do this, and it's an unbudgeted item, we've got to find out, you know, where the money's going to come from.
Right.
I mean, we have to say, okay, well, and actually, I think staff's done a good job recently in saying, well, we saved some money here. I know Mr. Johnson did that recently. We saved some money here, so we were able to pay for this, and so the net increase is only, you know, $252, or whatever it is. But I'd like to see when these come up, you know, how the budget's going to actually be changed. What we've done in the past is said, oh, we just make more transfers from utilities. And that's easy to say, but it may not even be necessary. We could easily say, well, we're going to lower our expenses on our healthcare costs this year by $200,000, you know, because we're tracking to be $200,000 under expense. But whatever it is that we have to do, I think we probably ought to have some thought put into where that money's going to come from.
Absolutely. I've got a project budget for this year for Volanta Park to have, we've got, I think, $30,000 to cover Volanta Park with Wi-Fi. I don't have to do that, all $30,000 this year.
And we don't want to have to tell you no either, if we have the money. I mean, if we have it, we don't want to say no for the sake of saying no.
Right. I can cut another project to make room for this. This is more important. We've got liability reasons for putting this in place.
To counsel, do you agree with me, is to make, you know, things balanced in our budget? Because a budget's a living document, and it can change, and it does change. It changes every day. It's a good time to bring it up now that we need to start looking at how things are going to be paid for.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Now, that was it, Jeff. I appreciate that. Counsel, I'll...
I have one.
Go ahead.
Every time I look at the news, do you know this character?
Right.
He could be my brother. I wouldn't know who it was.
That's the old camera system.
That's not the camera we're getting now.
No, no. These are high-definition cameras.
I want to make sure.
1080p, you know.
I mean, why are you going to get a camera you can't tell who's...
I agree, yeah. That's why we're getting...
I just thought I had to ask that, make sure we're...
I want to mention something real quick, since we're on the subject.
Yes, ma'am.
But the savings that we're talking about, too, some of the things that were cut, and with the note that said we're going to save here because of it, those things were never put back in. In other words, if we said, we're hiring this person, and therefore, we're going to save in this because we contract out here, here, I mean, there's a multitude of examples of this. Those are things that...
You could take personnel costs and say personnel costs are down by 100 grand, and we have dividend up between this project and that project.
Well, I'm just mentioning that all of those cuts, though, did not put the other back in. So we are going to have a series of things that come back. You see what I'm saying? That these things were cut, and the presentation showed that we cut this other expense. We're not going to have that anymore because we're doing it this way. Those cuts were made without putting back the expense, you see what I'm saying, for which we cut. So, we're finding those out more and more every day, so they're going to be coming up on the next forthcoming council meetings.
Okay. We'll see about that. We'll see what, it doesn't seem like that. We'll see what that looks like when we get it. Okay. Do we have a motion yet?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to purchase security equipment. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that's approved. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2018 Ford F-150 Supercab four-by-two pickup for animal control for the police department. The type of vehicle needed is on the state Alabama. Purchasing bid list therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total cost of $22,956. Believe this is a budgeted item, council. Yep, $2,000 under budget. Told you they're getting good. I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Item 16 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2019 Ford F-250 Supercab four-by-two pickup for Construction and Facilities Department. The type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department. A purchasing bid list therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a cost of $25,385. Look back here, and that is $1,600 below budget. I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 17 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase one Caterpillar D-80 UL 2200 diesel generator set for the fire department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance buying group. Contract therefore does not have to be let out for bid. This has already been nationally bid through the NJPA's bid process. Total cost is $33,564. That is budget, and look at there, $21,000. We could transfer some of that over and pay for those cameras. Still have $7,000 left over that Lynn would spend.
[laughing]
Smiling too much down there. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this purchase, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item 18 is a resolution to award the bid for replacement of well number three pump and assembly for the Water Department to Lane Christensen Company with a total cost not to exceed $61,250. Okay, Mr. Peterson? It's a budgeted item.
Yes.
You want to go through it again? You don't have to, I don't think. I don't think you have to.
I will say the well's been in since '91, I believe, is what I saw, and we haven't done anything to it. It's lost a little capacity, and it's an oil loop style pump, which is not what is recommended by today's standards. Water loop is, so we're replacing the pumping system with the water loop pump.
Okay, very good. Counsel, $3,750 to go to the security cameras on that.
[laughing]
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to award the replacement of the well pump to Lane Christensen Company.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item number 19 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 60-foot flagpole at the waterfront Rose Garden. This will be a replacement for the City of Fairhope, with a total cost of $6,540. Just so you know, council will think that we've been offered to be reimbursed for the cost of that flagpole as well. So while it's not budgeted, this will be no money out of pocket to the City of Fairhope ultimately. I'll entertain a motion to purchase this flagpole.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 20 is a resolution. The compensation and job classification plan, along with the grade order sheet, be amended and approved to add the following job position: a first assistant professional and the job description and pay, grade of pay for the same. You should see that under your tab 20. This was discussed at length by our professional, Mr. Marks, at last meeting's work session, if you all recall that. So, that, I'll entertain a motion to add this to the job classification plan and to fund the position.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Position is approved and funded. Thank you, council. Item 21 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope amends the rec department budget to increase its amount by up to $13,000 that is necessary to be used for part-time tennis assistance only. Also discussed in detail at last meeting's council work session. I'll entertain a motion to fund these part-time positions up to $13,000.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item number 22 is an appointment to the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board. The nomination is Mr. Jim Horner for a four-year term, a term ending March 2022. Councilman Conyers?
He is recommended by the Environmental Advisory Board.
That was my question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. With that, I'll entertain a motion to appoint this nominee.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Horner. Thank you for your service. Okay, item 23 was added. This involves the insert valves. I'll read this resolution. City of Fairhope did a request and received quotes for a contractor to install two insert valves to the water main relocation project at Polkett Creek on County Road 9, which is an unbudgeted operational item, and to also approve the vendor for the Water Department's change order for the county highway department bridge work for the city at 555 South Section Street. After evaluating the quotes, the City of Fairhope approves the request for the Water Department's unbudgeted operational funds for this change order for the city's portion of county highway department project to replace the bridge over Polkett. Does that say the same thing?
Mm-hmm.
And approves Consolidated Pipe Incorporated as the contractor for the work to install two insert valves at a cost of $12,000. Mr. Peterson, I have one question. Is it the cost of the valves themselves included in this?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Peterson? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion for this contract to be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, item 24 is a resolution. It was added to purchase the Fuel Master system that was discussed between the council, the mayor, and the marina manager in the work session. That is a vote to purchase the Fuel Master system for the Fairhope Docks Marina. Equipment is in addition to the city's Fuel Master system. It says the equipment is in addition, I'm sorry, to the city's Fuel Master system with a cost of $10,520. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to purchase this system.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item 25 was also added. This is that the City of Fairhope did a request and received quotes for work to the bulkhead at the marina for the fuel tank slab. Also, after evaluating the quotes, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of work to the bulkhead at the marina for the fuel tank slab for the City of Fairhope from Asphalt Services Incorporated with a total cost of $16,924, as discussed in tonight's work session. I would entertain a motion to approve this procurement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that purchase is approved. Thank you, council. And last but not least, is public participation for non-agenda items. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no, and I will close public participation, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, council.